Yo 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 yo.
Yes, yes.
Alright, yes, yes, yes. There's that girl in the background. Okay. Now, we're gonna talk about the week, what happened this whole week. We'll calculate everything. So. Alright, let's go. So, we're gonna replay Friday, then we're gonna go into the joint. So five, so our keynotes was it's it always followed a trend easier to enter the fair placement. It always followed a trend easier to enter the. It always followed a trend easy to enter off the fair placement. He always has a better chance of hitting TP. So those are. Keynotes. And this is where it took. So this is what we're gonna do. For US thirty, we're we're gonna just. First, we're gonna look at the US thirty, see what we could have did first. We go for a replay. We're gonna see what could we have done better. So as you can see. The downturn. Let's just see if we can catch a little setup. Nice little setup we could have catch right here. Nice little setup we could catch. Nice one on one. Nice little one on one. So boom, lose that one. So boom. Alright. W. L. Let's make it a little bit more. L I. I'm gonna do one point two slash one point two. I. This would have been a better one. Still around six. It's around seven, we're gonna see where it's going. So we could say sales. One, two. We can find a quick sale if we can. Just a quick sale. It's like right here, this would be a quick sale I've had. Let's see if we can get a quick sale. Nice, this is a nice one. It's a real nice one right here. Boom, with a soul. So. You target here, or you could target here, but we're gonna do the three to one, most likely. We probably exit because it's boom, boom, boom. So now it's ranging. So that's another L. Another L. For the takes. So I actually enter again, but this this is the real top. Let's see. So sure. Well, see. It's another L. I'll probably sell. Get me a quick nice little set. Oh my gosh, I probably I probably just sold too. I'll see. Thirty is just. So we got four Ls back to back to back. Like I said, I always wanted to keep testing this strategy because I really didn't like it. Really didn't like it all the way that much. I didn't like it all the way that much, so I want to keep testing. So now, we wait five minutes, it's four Ls. I like this one right here. I like how this one looks. Are we enter, we enter, we enter, we enter, we enter? I know guarantee it gotta hit the one on one. Too deep for me. I really probably just entered a one on one. Wow, we we lose. Oh, we lose, so that's five Ls. Five Ls. Probably enter again. Kind of been six. What would it? Five Ls. Let's see. Come back up. Let's see if I'm in it, how it's looking. I really don't like how this look, so I'll probably. Wait a little bit. Go back to one, see how it's looking. Not the wave. One, two. Three, four, five, something like that. You can't find that. So boom, it drops. Let it come back up. If it doesn't. You want one more touch? Into the alert here, boom. Now, this is what we try to make up for lost cause. So. We just looking for what we could find. In this area. If it breaks, it just breaks, but. You can't, if you wanna feel brave, you can't take something like this, but. You can come up with. Something like this. Something like this, and something like that. I'm coming with something like that. Let's see, let's see, let's see. Hold on. Hold on. Let's see, we go, what, five? Boom, we lose again, that's six losses. Now look at the. Boom. You probably, I probably just lost, I lost this whole day, this back testing. So I'll wait a little bit. See what the market is doing. One, two. Let's see. One, two, if it come here, most likely, I'll sell. Most likely I'll sell from here. I probably can catch a nice three to one setup. That's the first one I'll call it, a nice three to one. Oh, got a nice three to one. There's another one. One, two. Three, push. We thought this one. I like that, I like that, I like that. I already thought it right there. If it don't push up. We wanna see it push, so I like how this is looking. We probably answer somewhere right here. Yeah, we answered, we answered, we answered, even if it push. That's true. I like how this is looking. I might wanna go up to the upside. Boom, lose. I like how this one looks. One, two. One, two, three. Gotta push. So, we did straight sells and it kinda didn't work. We went seven losses and that's where I'm coming from, so. What could we have do? So this week, we have to feel like if this is really profitable, or. You have to realize, is it really profitable? Because when I backtested, this was nasty work. I really like this strategy on gold dome, so if anything, I'll just take it out and put gold on this strategy, so like, let's see, oh. We'll test gold out. Because that's fucking nasty work. One win and seven losses.
Shit, we just like, we'd rather do the opposite of what we were doing.
So. Go. Alright, let's do gold now. So go. We're just gonna press replay. We're gonna keep it nice and simple. Hopefully, it's taking along. I don't know why it's taking so long, so. Let's see. We're gonna put the replay from here. Replay from here, replay, 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 replay. Replay, I would have bought the play. So replay. One, two, three, smack. Uh, let's see, so it's five o'clock, let's see, wake up at five. I like how this is looking. I like how this looks. So what I have noticed, they just follow the one minute. So it does, boom, boom. Boom. About this right here. So. Okay, that's one. That's two touches. It's a nice little jump right here. One, two, three. I like how that look, to be honest, one, two, three. This is nice. One, two, three, push. So, uh, uh, uh. I like how that look at a ball. It's nice ball right here. Nice ball, 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 nice ball. Sorry here. L. W. L. I. Slash, so you got one, two, you got another one, this is better, one, two. Somewhere right here. So, uh, the weekend, A, wait till it comes right here. Oh yeah, so. About six forty. I like how this look, to be honest. But we probably missed that. That's a sell. We would have sold. We want, we would have sold right here, we want to push, to at least right here. We want to push. Right here. So L, another L, I'm just getting Ls after Ls, this might just be trash. Boom. This is the point of. Comes right here. You know what we wanna see. Are we enter a bar? Enter a bar. See what it does. It drops. Oh, he goes again. We lose again. So really, we just gotta stay sell, so just stay sell. Oh, just stay sell. I like how this look. So short. It comes right down. So. I'm trying to find a sell, I can find in here, find somewhat type of sell. One, two. One, two. One, three. That's the third touch. One, two, three, oh, oh, this is blue right here. Like how this look. Mostly. I wanna see some, this is really a sell. I just wanna see. Wow. Wow, look at that. Wow, bro. Wow, bro. This kinda pisses me off cuz it's like, oh, I studied for that week. I'm just have to let it go. I'm just have to let it go cuz, uh, bro, look. It's like, I, I'm trying to stay doing the same thing. I'm like, it's like, but it won't that good to be honest. The strategy won't that good. Some setups won't really that good. Like, look at this. This is. Where does she? This is fucking nasty work. This is disgusting. Now I have a fifty. Mmm, yum. Mmm. This is nasty work. I don't like this. I really don't. I kinda still wanna test the strategy. I really do. Like, I'm not. Sorry. Just replay. I don't wanna do this shit no more. That's ended. So. Sell. Boom, boom, it doesn't sell. Boom, boom, it doesn't sell. Boom, boom, it doesn't sell. So down. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. This lowkey stressing me out. I'm trying. But. This shit stressing me out. This shit lowkey really stressing me out, bro. Breaks over. Sell. Sell. Bars, 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 bars. Break out. Start a sell. Here it does sell. Now, let's look at our Friday. I hear what we could have did. Now, where is the? What was that? Don't know. I don't know, man. I don't know. Alright, so. Like, we won three times. Um, on Friday, but when we backtested, we lost. We lost three times. That's why I wanna get too emotional cuz we won really. Uh, let's look at thirty. Man, what that shit at? Okay. So on Friday, it was. One. I really do wanna start one, so. But. So. Let's look at. Okay, so it was going, oh, one, two, oh. So we ride the trend on the one minute. I don't, it's like, I don't, I'm gonna tell her honestly, I wanna kinda stop overanalyzing. Cuz it's not really making sense to me. It's kinda not. Sounded lowkey kinda pissing me off. Let me see. Oh, that's a nice one. Boom, boom, that capture. Push up, push up, push up. Push up. That's a nice one. So why I think, oh, why did I answer this? So, push up. Hmm 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 hmm, push up, push up. Push up, push up. Okay, so I actually took pretty decent trades this day. I feel this, this is pretty decent drop, push down, push up. I say usually wait for the big candles, boom boom. It comes here, boom. And push up. I don't really think this is a dumb trade now that I think about it. Come down, push up. Okay. Alright, let's look at gold. Look who we had did better. Let's see. So go, push down. So go. So, one, two. Let's see what I did on this gold. What made me go, what made me buy? Why was I buying? So this is the sales we catch, right? So, this is the EMA. So. That's not, that's, that's a cool buy though. Lowkey boom 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 boom. That's a good buy. Lowkey that is a good buy. It drops. Comes out. It hits the one. Actually good. Okay, those is good. Boom 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 boom. Comes out, this is like not realistic. I see this, it comes up here. This is a nice buy. This is a nice buy. Oh, you can see the sales coming through. Ah, fuck. Then, let's go back to our gold, we'll do it right here. So, sell. Okay, so one, two, three, smack. Boom boom boom, it comes up, smack again. And smack, boom boom smack. So. You see this push up, oh, oh. One, two. Try to sell right here. No, it happens. I don't know what this is. Get the big drop. Sell, smack. Goes up after that, and now it goes up. So, Thursday, so Friday was a good day for gold. Smacking and smacking. So we gonna review this whole thing? Might buy a challenge, might not. I think we should test it out. Mm-hmm. Cuz it ain't no point in keep testing it. We tested for a week, and the statistics we got, once it bring out, I'll wait for the second retracement. Larger. Larger. Large. Drops. Oh, larger. Moves. Usually. Continue. You, larger moves usually. Go the same. Direction. So, answer off. Point five there. Once it break out of a range, it's like a retracement. Yeah. The E I wave. Alright, so let's look at the, like, we not gonna overanalyze, like, we not about to break down or don't. So like, we see here, so we just wanted sales. This is half the day of sales right here. Straight sell, so from. So from five, all the way down to like twelve, it was sales, switch to bars. And now you. Right, it's a, we go over here, buy, 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 sell. Buying, it's buying, it's buying. It's buying, then sell, you buy right here. Then it's selling, it's selling, it's selling, it's selling, it's selling, selling. Uh, you could get confused right here, once this, buy, buy. Let's see the end of the day with this gold, so. Once it come here, boom 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 boom, boom 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 boom, boom boom boom. Boom, boom, uh, uh, nah 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 nah. Buy. You probably can't buy nowhere right here. I don't see nowhere you can enter. Boom 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 boom. I see a big drop, boom 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 boom, sell, boom 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 boom. Boom 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 boom. Boom, I like this, sell, boom 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 boom. Boom, boom, boom. Buy, sell, sell. Then boom 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 boom, boom 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 boom. Alright, let's see the thirty now. So let's go back to thirty and just, let's just analyze. Sometimes, instead of just, alright, why isn't the strategy working? It, if we did one-on-one, and then once we reran it back, it kinda messed us up. So boom 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 boom. I really wanna keep studying. Yeah, watch out, nigga. Oh, man. I got old ass on horse. I'm sure a young nigga. That old nigga better watch out. So our gold, so boom 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 boom, boom boom boom, sell, boom 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 boom. Never sell, never sell, never sell, never sell, never sell, never sell. Boom 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 boom. See this boom boom, sell right here. Sales good, actually. Boom 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 boom. Sell, that's a nice perfect sell. Boom 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 boom. Fail, loss. Boom 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 boom. See this push, see another push, see another push. Once you see this, go for a sell, sell right here. One, two, fail, push up, sell. Right here, boom, wait, right here, boom 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 boom, it hits here. Push up, push up, push up again. Push up again, sell. Push up, sell. Now, look, I don't really. I don't know, man. I don't know. I still wouldn't do a challenge. Let me see, crawl. I need to double leverage. Can you do double leverage on phase one? The leverage, no, the leverage is low at all. This is crazy. I probably tested on the flex. Oh, okay, double. I can do, that's about a flex account. But a ten K, try to ten K first, see if it works, then try a hundred K. But I'll probably do point fives instead of ones. So. Let's add this up. So this. Equal. Three point six, okay. Let's see. Operator, let's get the count. So for the total, it would be. Three point six five plus three point six. Oh my god, three point six. Come on, delete all this. Three point six five plus three point, this is six five again. Plus one, plus one. Plus one, it's ten point three. So you get a ten point three percent. Maybe just say ten point three percent. Maybe just say ten point three. If the losses, and you do the losses every time. One point two, one point two, one point two. That's one point two times, but. Seven, is eight point four. At least. Ten point three. Hmm, take away. Eight point four, is one point nine. So. One point nine percent on the account in one week. One week. We can't go back in time and just keeps testing. Right? Let me go back. How much, how much stuff I got? Let's delete this. So. Well, let's try Tuesday. We just could try Tuesday, one minute, two minute, so. We have this twice. Could've answered right here. Loss. Do this one. We answer this, we answer this, we answer that. One. Just had a replay. Alright, let's go. Six. Oh, one point two times, five, six, seven. Eight point four. And that's. Eleven, twenty, eighty-one, take away. Eight point four, equals thirty, is thirty. Three, four. Eighty-six. Three, four, one, percent. So, that's it for, we got three point four one, a three percent gain, and a, oh. Fuck, where is this on that? Man, one point nine, so we're getting five percent. On the week, good. So, once it breaks out of a range, a ranging area, wait for the second retracement. Larger moves, we go in the same direction of the E I wave. That's what we can take out of this. And then US thirty, with how you wrote, that shit. Five thirty is always better. Yeah, the way it has a better chance of hitting, so, what I like. I gotta test the five thirty, then seven thirty. I probably do that, get off, post a YouTube video for tomorrow. And, yeah, that's it, um. I studied for an hour, I'd like to study for like two more, at least two. I don't like this. Ooh. Yeah, probably, yeah. We about to do the magic thirty, so. We just gonna go back and like s- see what we could've did better. So. Let me see, this is the notes we wrote. And then we, we execute on these, so go, I went thirty. So. Let's see what we could've did. So we started Tuesday. Monday, we haven't taken no notes. Well, we can even see what we did Monday. Well, we can even see what we did Monday. So, we gonna just. Study this Monday. See what we could've, see what we did. And see what works. So boom. Price. One minute. Fancy peach, oh wow. Alright, so. Let's see what we could hear, so. We'll have our, so we go to Monday. Monday, you see it big drop. It comes up and never continues. Result never continue, but result. Alright, as you can see, it's not dropping. So we get it, we answer off this. And we answer off this, that's, that's a good, this is, this is a cool. Cool double entry. It goes up, comes down, comes up, I like how this push up. I like this day because it's a strong, so boom, 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 you don't enter here. You wait, you wait, it pushes up. Fifty, you don't, ooh, you don't enter here, that's smart. You get this, that's a nice entry. Boom, 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 you don't enter here, could you enter this one, it goes up. I love the entries I was doing, I really love the entries, ah, where I entered from? Where did I enter from here? Oh, cause that, that right there, uh huh, okay. Doesn't wanna break, you see it didn't wanna break, ooh, yeah, oh, this is perfect, ooh, this look clean. So, I see this day, I'm just following the trend, and it looks so clean, like. That's why I was like, some days it just not gonna look good, and. And this, I'm understanding, okay, it hits here, you don't enter, you don't enter. It's playing around here, but you enter here. Boom, boom. You don't enter, boom, boom, boom. It drops, it goes up. You try to enter here. It hit the fifty, you want to hit this, still hit that one, nice one on one. But it drops, drops, drops. You try to hit this, it hits that one on one. It's a nice one on one, it comes back down, comes up. Not breaking. It comes up, I like this right here, I, I'm liking this. I'm liking this right, I'm liking this real nice. That's why I'm feeling good. So boom, and you wanna take this over to the tivity top. One, boom, 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 boom. Doesn't wanna break, it goes up in an up direction, it comes here. It's this big drop, it comes down. You should not enter this, should've waited. But you should've entered this, yes, you should've entered this, cause it's still an up trend. Oh my gosh, so boom, boom, boom. Comes up, comes down, comes to this fifty, you enter right there again. Comes up, comes up. One, two. Edge, one, two, that's a nice one. Yeah, oh my god, this is nice. I like this. Monday was just perfect. So let's look at Monday, this is like Monday. So this is a, this would've been like a Monday type day. This would've been like a Monday type day, this would've been like a Monday type day. Ranging, ranging. It only really works for like, I noticed like. Or. Probably wouldn't have worked, probably would've worked, probably would've worked. Probably wouldn't have worked. Probably definitely would've worked, definitely would've worked, definitely would've worked. Some days is better than others, you can see, like this wouldn't have worked, this wouldn't have worked. Three days in a row. But let's, let's, let's just see. Like, I wanna do days like this. So boom. We come here. So boom, let's just delete all this, so, let's just say. We talking about bars. So boom, 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 boom. Sell, come up, sell, come up, sell, sell, sell. Boom. Boom. We don't really enter. Just sell. You wanna see a drop, doesn't really drop. It breaks. Comes up, wanna buy, doesn't really come back. Or, yeah, it doesn't really come back, comes, breaks again. Goodbye. So you really don't see any. Oh shit, we don't follow in it. Now, alright, this is really no better. So. Like this, alright. This is, this is just ranging, so but we coming from a. So you can see. Says I sell, come up, sell. So buy, comes up, buy, sell. Comes up, sell. Still, it's still kinda in a buying motion. It's not dropping, buy. This is the, this is the one right here. This one. Buy, nice. Nice, it comes down, sell. Comes up, sell again, this is just sell, comes up. Thing, it comes up, thing, you know, we look for bars. You don't see any bars, you get this type of vibe, but it's nasty work. Come here, buy. Come here, buy, come here, drop, 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 you don't really wanna buy, drop, drop, drop. Comes here, this is nasty work, you get a bigger drop, 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 drop. You get this push up. Push it up. We, we looking for the, this is where we look for the sells. Somewhere around here. So sometimes, it ain't gonna be every day it's gonna look clean like this, but. So. I'm liking it, so push up. You just push up, it's still in a ranging shit too, but you can take advantage, range, 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 range. Comes up here. Goodbye. It drops, comes up, drops again, comes up, drops again. Comes up, drops again. Comes up, drops again, it buys, come up, buy, probably look for the buy somewhere right here. Buy. Comes up, it gives you that nice one on one. And smackdown, you did this E I way, come up. Try to probably hit the tivity top. But this rain year, the ranging day was nasty. This shit was nasty though. I ain't gonna lie, it was nasty, but you can follow it. You can follow it, like I said, we going. We might, we gonna buy the challenge, we gonna buy the challenge. And we going, and we, and, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, we gonna buy the challenge, but yeah. Like, comment, subscribe, and we outta here, baby.